Good evening and welcome to the July 27th Corner Madera Planning Commission meeting. Adam, would you please call the roll?
Sure. Good evening. Commissioner Metcalf?
Here.
Commissioner Bundy?
Yeah.
Commissioner Chase?
Here.
Commissioner Bendel?
Here.
And Commissioner Rizzo?
Here.
Okay, well, I'm going to start out by saying that if you want to make public comment tonight, you can do so at publiccomment@tcmline.org, or you can use the chat function on your screen, or you can raise your hand. So we open the meeting now to public comment for that which is not on tonight's agenda. So if you're going to address anything that you'd like to that's not on tonight's agenda, you have three minutes to do so. And I don't know that we have, we have one attendee, but does anybody show any hands up?
I'm not seeing any hands.
Oh. We're getting some attendees here and it looks like Sarah Jane Zarco has a hand up, but it's for something that is not on tonight's agenda if you have a hand up. So.
It's Sarah Jane is here for the item, the public hearing.
Right, okay. All right, so we'll trust that she'll be wanting her hand up when we get to the item on the agenda, but that for tonight, right now.
Do you want to just, do you want to just check Martha? Let's allow her to talk and to make sure that it's, she doesn't have anything to say regarding something that's not on the agenda tonight.
Second.
I have a ability here to say allowed to talk.
Okay, I did as well. Sarah Jane, you are free to speak. This is for items not on the agenda. So this would be something other than the 525.
I just hit the button on accident. I'm trying to actually like catch the setting.
That's okay.
I talk on the agenda.
All right, that's what we figured, just making sure, all right.
All right, thank you very much. We'll get to soon in due course here. So we don't see any other hands up at the moment. Are there any chat or any any emails in?
I am not seeing any.
Okay. So then we'll just go ahead and close the public comment section of tonight's agenda and we'll go right into our new hearing. So the new hearing tonight is on 525 Campbell Pius Drive. This is a design review application, PL 20200101 for a 1,081 square foot residential addition with a 507 square foot second level deck, an eight foot tall fence along the westerly side property boundary, and variance application, PL 210060 for an encroachment into the required front yard setback at 525 Campbell Pius Drive. That's a lot to say.
Can you hear me?
Yes, I can.
Can you hear me?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay, my, my screen is frozen. It's not responding. Um, so I'm going to try closing and then signing back in.
Okay.
Sounds good.
While she's doing that, Adam, I'm just going to check with you that we're going to have to approve the variance separate from the other application. Is that correct?
Uh, I believe there's one resolution for you this evening.
Okay.
Resolution 21-010, but that certainly is, uh, there are different findings obviously for the variance than there are for the design review application. So that is certainly something that could be considered if the commission ends up sort of discussing those items. We could certainly discuss them separately, but uh, you know, it's going to depend on just where the commission goes with, with the findings.
Okay. All right, well, for those of you who are watching, this is known as dead air time. When the person running the show, Martha, is having technical difficulties. So she'll be right back.
I'm trying to connect into the computer and I think I just did it.
Yes.
Yeah. See, there she's gone. One second.
Okay.
Adam, you might have to promote Martha to a panelist. I'm not able to do it because I'm not co-hosting right now, but I see her as an attendee.
I don't see.
If you click on her name, it should give you promote to panelist option.
And we've got Margaret's fan in that Margaret.
I need to be taller.
So we've got two Margarets now.
There. Okay, so I'll get out of this one. Now.
There you go.
Okay, this is better. I won't run out of juice.
Yeah, well, I was just.
So I'm having some difficulty with my internet connection. I may have to go in and out and reconnect.
You're still on with your iPad, Margaret?
I know, I don't have to get out of that. Life is difficult.
Looking forward to the in-person commission meetings again.
Mom, I need to get out of here.
Maybe I'll just leave this one.
We have.
No, Martha muted.
Yeah, no, I know. She's trying to, it's, she was, she was gut on. I'm not sure if her camera is unfortunately not, doesn't seem to be working.
Can you hear it, Dina?
I can. No. This needs to be here. But I don't know how to get out of this one. This one, I have to leave the meeting.
We've been doing so well with.
I know. This is like the first one that we've actually
I think that Margaret in two boxes again.
You can just turn that iPad off. There you go. Now you're.
Now I should be in just one.
You are. He needs my book to sit on. How do I get it to Ithaca?
Well.
We moved Martha again?
Yeah. She's going to try again. All right, let me try.
She's on as an attendee, so try to see if you can make her, promote her to a panelist again, Adam.
Yep.
For some reason, my camera's not working and my, hopefully this works. And my camera is not turning on for some reason.
Huh. Yikes.
And I'm, it's not allowing, it freezes up when I try to share my screen.
Thank you.
That's a real problem. So you're not able to, you're able to see what the screen shows. You're looking at all of us. Is that correct?
Correct.
Yeah.
I can try signing on to another computer. I keep getting an error message that the webinar is not responding. Adam, do you want to maybe try to pull up the presentation?
Yeah, certainly. Yeah, let's try that. And then you can, even if we don't see you, you'll be able to sort of just direct me on what you want to show.
Yes.
What do I do? And I'll just do it from basically the, let's see, screen one. So I can, oh wait, I have to get to your presentation. Let me.
Yeah, it's in the the address file.
Yeah.
Under planning.
Yeah, oh, sorry.
And there should just be one presentation.
Right. Yeah, I think this will work.
There you go.
It is, so I can't see the screen, but I do have a hard copy of the slides, so I'll just tell you when to advance it.
So you're not able to see any of us on the screen?
No.
Oh.
It just says web, Zoom webinar not responding and it's a blank white, white screen.
Weird. Never heard of that.
Can you get on with, with another, like your phone or an iPad?
Yeah, I can try getting on with the phone. I mean, I can run through the, the presentation and I'll also tell you when to advance the slide. I have a hard copy, so I'll.
If you want to make it fullscreen, Adam, then we can see just the slide.
Sure. It comes up with these notes. Are you seeing all the notes and everything?
Yes.
You are. Yeah, I'm trying to get rid of that and I don't know why it does that. Yeah, I'm trying to just share the, I'm trying to make it fullscreen. Let's not do, let's see.
Adam, if you go, if you exit and then go to slideshow, I think there is normally a box that you, that's probably automatically checked in that you could uncheck the box, so it shows it in presentation mode without notes. Go to slideshow. And show me controls. The box that says use presenter view, uncheck that and then try it again. Play from beginning.
Yeah, it, it, it's showing up on my second screen. Yeah, it's, it's not, what I'll do is I'll, I don't know why it's, let me put this here and I'll try to do it this way. It's, it's weird. This has happened before, but it will just share, let's see, share screen two. Let's do it that way. I'd like to get this over on screen one. I can't.
There.
Yeah, but it has us on there. It's, it, for whatever, I'll, let me see. How about that? Does that work?
That's filling this whole screen.
Yeah, that's it, yeah. So it looks like it's slide one. It starts with the Bervish Design Review Application.
All right, Martha, if, we'll give it a shot. Are you, where did Martha go?
He is as an attendee, you have to promote her again to panelists.
Is this going to keep happening? Let's see. Participants, let me see if I can get the participants. Attendees, Martha, promote to panelist. Here she comes. She's muted. I made, I made her a co-host. I don't know if that's necessary. Martha, are you there? Martha?
It looks like you're unmuted. Can you hear us?
Hi. Now she's lost more capability, unfortunately.
What about trying her iPhone the way Margaret mentioned?
Yeah, I mean, I'll. Yeah.
I can also try. I had this issue before for a MIRA meeting. I can try calling Martha, put her on speaker and then I'll unmute myself, but it will be Martha speaking. Give me one second.
Apparently there's also an option to just call in by telephone. It's in the same Evite that Zoom sent us. So I imagine her Evite would have the same thing, a telephone number that would put her as a presenter on phone.
Yeah, I think we're. Let's see. Just give us a couple more minutes. She's going to try to. She's trying a different computer at the moment. There you are.
Can you hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay.
It's a little bit, yeah, it's a little bit, uh, try again. It's just.
Can you, can you hear me now?
It's a little bit scratchy. You're a little loud, so if you can. It's not entirely clear.
How, how's this?
I think it's serviceable. We'll try.
Is it better if I speak on the phone?
It's all the difference.
Yeah, I, I don't, you, you may try the phone. I, I'm sorry. I just.
Okay, I want to make sure everyone can hear me. So if this isn't, if this isn't good, then I'll turn this off. Take me one minute.
Just try the phone, yeah. Well. This is a new, thanks for the patience. Yes, first time for everything, I guess.
Things have been going very smoothly up till now.
We're going to have Martha using my phone. She's on speaker. Martha, go ahead.
Okay, good evening, everybody. I apologize for the technical difficulties. Please bear, bear with me. I'm sorry, my camera is not on. So this evening, planning commissioners, you will be considering a design review and variance application. The project includes a 1,081 square foot addition along with a second level deck, an eight foot tall fence, and the variance is for an encroachment into the front yard setback. Can you change the, the screen, Adam? The project site is located at 525 Campbell Pius Drive. It is accessed from Campbell Pius Drive. There are single-family residences located to the east, to the west, and the south of the project site. Located north of the project site across Campbell Pius Drive is the Park Madera Shopping Center. There is an alleyway that abuts the rear portion of the project site. Next slide. The project site is developed with a two-story home. The project site is approximately 9,365 square feet and it is substantially larger than the other parcels on the block. The eight other parcels on Campbell Pius Drive between Eastman Avenue and Sausalito Street are an average size of approximately 4,800 square feet. The project site is a rectangular lot that is approximately 80 feet wide by 170 feet long. And the site slopes upward in the southerly direction with the southeastern corner of the site being the high point. Next slide. The project site is Zoned R1 Medium Density Residential and the proposed project complies with the majority of development standards in the R1 zoning district with the exception of a front setback for which a variance has been requested. The existing residence which was constructed in the 1920s has a front setback of 10 feet for the resident and the entry stairs that provide access to the living area on the second floor have a setback of 11 feet 8 inches. As part of the project, the applicant is proposing to revise the entry stairs so that they are code compliant and this results in the entry stairs having a setback of 10 feet. The project complies with the lot coverage and floor area ratios, which is a maximum of 40% and the ADU ordinance allows for an exceedance of 800 square feet for both lot coverage and floor area for purposes of constructing an ADU and the applicant is not taking advantage of those allowable exceedances. The existing residence has a height of 20 feet and the proposed residence addition has a height of 22 feet 6 inches. Next slide. The site plan shows the existing residence outlined in red, the proposed addition outlined in blue, the deck outlined in purple, and then the ADU outlined in yellow. As I mentioned, the existing residence has a front setback of 10 feet. It's located 6 feet to the eastern property boundary and 50 feet to the rear. The proposed addition, the ADU are closest to the neighbor to the, the west at 519 Campbell Pius. The addition has a setback of 33 feet to the west side property boundary, 22 feet to the front, and 50 feet to the rear. And the proposed deck has a setback to the side property boundary of 21 feet 6 inches and 22 feet to the front and 50 feet to the rear. And the ADU is allowed to be 4 feet from the side property.
Hey, can we hold on for a second? Sorry, is Lorena there?
Yes.
Oh, sorry, just trying to, I think it's, there's a lot of background noise that we're trying to sort through. Just wondering if that's coming from one of your ends of this. Not sure.
All right, is that better?
Yes.
Okay.
Thanks.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
The, the proposed ADU has a setback of 10 feet to the west side property boundary, 22 feet to the front. And then this site plan also shows.
Yeah, there's, there's still some more static and things going on. I'm not sure where that's coming from.
All right, I'm taking, my dog has a bouncy ball and I'm taking it away right now. Let me just get up. Sorry.
I, I know it wasn't anticipated that we'd be coming through your, your speaker, but we're here.
Let me know if that's better. I just grabbed it.
The, the site plan also shows the two uncovered parking spaces that are located in the rear portion of the site. Next slide. The existing fourth, first floor does not include any habitable square footage. There is a garage that is 636 square feet. The proposed addition on the lower level includes a storage area that is 368 square feet and then an ADU is also proposed on the lower level, which is 587 square feet. Inconsistent with state law and the town's ADU ordinance, the ADU is not part of the design review and it is being reviewed for performance with the objective standards in the town's ADU ordinance. Next slide. The existing living, living area is located entirely on a second floor currently. The size of the current residence is 1,317 square feet and that includes a bathroom, three bedrooms, kitchen, living room, and dining room. And as part of the project, the applicant is proposing a second story addition of 713 square feet and the addition will be an expanded living room, dining room, and kitchen, and then a new master bedroom and bath. A second level deck is also proposed off of the second floor and the deck as proposed is just over 500 and so, 500 square feet. Next slide. The west elevation faces the neighbor to the west at 517, or sorry, 519 Campbell Pius. The existing west elevation has seven windows and the proposed elevation includes three windows, a sliding accordion style door, and then French doors. The maximum height of this elevation is 22 feet 6 inches to the top of the ridge and the height of the deck is, the top of the railing is 12 feet 9 inches. The deck runs the length of the proposed addition. It has a length of 44 feet and the width of the deck varies from just over 12 feet at the northern portion of the deck to just under 11 feet at the southern portion of the deck. This elevation also includes the ADU. And consistent with the town's ADU ordinance, the windows on this elevation will be clear story since they are located less than 15 feet to the shared side property boundary and since the addition for the, the residents on the adjacent house, non-clear story windows that face the ADU. Next slide. The proposed north elevation faces Campbell Pius Drive. And you could see the existing front elevation and the lighter line weight and the addition is shown in the darker line weight. The existing front elevation includes two windows and a garage door. And as part of the project, the applicant proposes to remove one of the windows and the, the, the entrance will now be on this front elevation to the, the residence. This elevation also includes the proposed storage area which includes an entrance door and then a, a window. And you can also see the, the lower level ADU on this elevation as well, which will include the primary entrance to the ADU and there are also two windows proposed. As you can see, the deck is partially over the proposed ADU and has a height of 12 feet 3 inches. Next slide. The east elevation faces the neighbor at 531 Campbell Pius Drive. This elevation includes six existing windows and no changes are proposed to the windows. The only modification to this elevation is modify, removing the, the existing front entry door from this elevation and again, it's being relocated to the, to the front elevation facing Campbell Pius. Next slide. The south elevation faces the rear of the property and the residences on Manzanita Way. The existing south elevation includes two windows and an entry door and the proposed elevation includes three windows. And you can also see the, the access stairs that are proposed, which will provide access from the rear of the lot onto the deck and into the, the expanded residence. Next slide. The existing residence includes green horizontal siding, white trim, and a maroon entry door and garage door. The applicant is proposing gray hardy plank lap siding with white trim and a wet red door. And the project is located in the, the Woolley and it is required to, to comply with the fire resistant requirements set forth in the building code. Next slide. The applicants provided their neighbors with the plans prior to submitting the designer view application and they spoke with all of the neighbors on the, the block between Eastman and Sausalito Street. Neighbors that signed the petition of support are shown in purple. And there are also three individuals that provided a letter of support, which are shown in blue. And there are also three individuals that provided a letter of support, which are shown in blue, and that includes five fifteen Tamalpais, five thirty-one Tamalpais, and five twenty-four Manzanita. And the town received a letter of opposition from the neighbor to the west at five nineteen Tamalpais, the Zarcos, and all of these letters and the petition were included as attachments to your staff report. Next slide. The project includes a variance request for the front yard setback. The project is zoned R1, and the required setback is twenty, twenty feet. Staircases that have a height greater than three feet are required to meet the front setback requirement, except that they may extend up to six feet into the front yard setback. As I men- mentioned, the house was constructed in the nineteen twenties, and the construction is, was before the adoption of the zoning ordinance and the current development standards. The existing entry stairs are located eleven feet eight inches to the front property line, and the applicant is proposing to modify the stairs to make them code compliant so that they meet the minimum requirements for landings and also stair height and stair depth. And so the, the new stairs will be ten feet from the, the property line, and it requires a variance since the existing legal non-conforming situation is being modified. And next slide. As part of the, the process, a staff visited the adjacent neighbor at five nineteen Tamalpais Drive and took pictures both from within the residence and also outside on the front entry porch and also in the backyard. The pictures on this slide, a picture on the left was taken at the front entry porch at five nineteen Tamalpais, looking east towards the project site. The picture on the right was taken in the backyard on the, the deck just outside of the residence, also looking east. Next slide. Both of these pictures were taken from the backyard of five nineteen Tamalpais. The picture on the left was taken from about the lower third of the backyard, looking east towards the project site. And the picture on the right was taken from about the midway point of the backyard, looking in a northeast direction. Next slide. And these pictures were also taken from the backyard. The picture on the left was taken on the upper portion of the yard, looking east, and the picture on the right was taking, was taken also in the upper portion, looking in a northeast direction. Next slide. These pictures were taken within the residence at five nineteen Tamalpais Drive. There are two bedrooms that face the project site, and within each bedroom, there are two windows. The picture on the left was taken from one of the bedroom windows, looking east, and this was taken kind of right at the window, and then the picture on the right was taken about five steps back, also looking towards the addition. Next slide. A staff also took pictures at the project site. The picture on the left shows the measuring tape, which is eight feet high, which is the height of the proposed fence. And the picture on the right was taken in, in the backyard, looking in a north, northerly direction. And the red string represents the height of the decking surface, and the teal string represents the height of the railings. Next slide. And the staff took pictures at the height of the decking surface. The, both of these pictures were taken in the front half of the deck, so the northern half, closest to Tamalpais. The picture on the left was taken looking in the southwest direction, and the picture on the right was looking west. Next slide. These pictures were taken of the decking surface in the, the back half, so the southern portion of the deck, looking west, picture on the left, and the picture on the right was looking in a northwest direction. Next slide. Staff has added two conditions of approval to the resolution to address the privacy impacts. The first condition, deck modifications. This would require that this, the southern portion of the deck be reduced in width, and this would result in this back half of the deck providing access to the, to the house, but it would preclude people from congregating on, on this area of the deck. Now, the second condition requires vegetation screening, and if the existing landscaping along the property line is removed or damaged, then evergreen shrubs would be required to be planted along the western property boundary in the area adjacent to the existing structure at five nineteen Tamalpais. And the planning commission may want to make further modifications or changes to these conditions or add additional conditions as part of the discussion this evening. Next slide. I've included the design review findings on this slide, and the subsequent slide includes the variance findings. And in order to approve the project, the planning commission must make all of the designer view and variance findings, and staff is able to make the findings. There is a discussion in the staff report, and I'm available to answer any questions regarding the findings. And staff recommends that the planning commission approve the draft resolution twenty-one zero one zero, including the conditions of approval numbers ten and eleven, approving the major designer view application PL twenty twenty zero one zero one, and variance application PL twenty-one zero six zero for residential addition totaling one thousand and eighty-one square feet with a second-story deck and eight-foot-tall fence along the westerly property boundary, and a variance to allow an encroachment into the front yard setback at five two five Tamalpais Drive. That concludes staff's presentation, and I'm available for any questions. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Martha. Technically challenged there, but you pulled it off. So, very good. So, remember, what we're going to do here is we're going to ask staff any questions that we have about her presentation, and then we will hear from the applicant, and then we will go to public comment, and then we will debate the application. So with that said, I'll start with you, Dr. Bundy. Do you have any questions for staff?
No.
No. Okay. Mr. Rizzo, do you have any questions for staff?
You know, I always have questions, Peter.
Okay, man. Let's have them, yeah.
Thank you. I, I know this is right in that area, and it is elevated. I was just wondering if it, if it was found that it was out of the floodplain and all that. I know that the, the bay used to come into that area, but it is elevated. Was, was that ever verified, or would it ever come into?
It is not, it is not located in, in the floodplain.
And are there any additional grading plans with topogra- topographic lines showing how the grading is going to work for the addition other than the sections?
There is nothing additional beyond the two, the two sheets that I sent out this afternoon to the commissioners. And the, the engineer who prepared the drawings is on the phone, Lance Warren, and he'd be best suited to answer any grading specific questions.
Okay. And, and lastly, when you were at five nineteen Tamalpais, were you able to verify the rooms that are facing the project? Were they bedrooms? Were they living spaces, private rooms?
Yeah, they are bedrooms. They're currently, there's the applicant, there were the, five nineteen Tamalpais is working on a backyard renovation, so they currently are not living in the home, but the homeowner, Sarah, indicated they were bedrooms. So there's two bedrooms that face the proposed project.
Thank you very much.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Rizzo. Margaret, from where you are, do you have any questions for staff?
I just want to verify what I think I saw, that there was no real landscape change or plan to enhance landscape there around the new deck, or?
That is correct. There is, the condition that staff added that if landscaping is removed or damaged, it would need to be replaced, and there's a specification that it needs to be an evergreen shrub of a certain size, but there is nothing beyond that.
Okay, thank you. That's all.
Of course, you have any questions for staff on this issue?
My only question would be to staff is, have you checked to see if there's been the establishment of the exact property line between five nineteen?
There is a survey that was done, and it was included in the plan, so the property lines have been, have been determined through that. As part of the process, there is a condition of approval that requires verification on property boundaries before foundations are poured, so that would be done at that point as well.
But it has not been marked on the property?
It, it has been marked, but it's, it's a little unclear. The markings are a little unclear.
I, I think the corners have been marked, but the entire property boundary, I don't know if that's been strung. Is that right, Martha?
Yes, the corners have been marked. When we were in the, at the site yesterday, Commissioner Bundy, Chase, and myself, we were unable to locate one of the pins on the western edge of the property. There's one kind of in the midway point, but we had difficulty locating the markings on the, the western edge. But it has been surveyed.
And another question, Martha. Has staff determined in any way that there should be just one fence and not the two, which are what, two, two and a half, three feet apart from each other?
Staff has not made a determination on that. I know there was a comment from the, the neighbors at five nineteen Tamalpais that their preference would be to have just one fence. Now, there currently are, are two fences, and there's kind of an, an area of one to three feet in between the fences where garbage accumulates, and it's hard to maintain it, so that was, the neighbor expressed a, a preference for there just to be one fence.
And whose property is that between the two fences?
It's a little unclear.
Yeah. Okay. No, just to be clear, there's no, there's no requirement, obviously, for only one fence or for two fences. That's sort of up to the property owners as they see, you know, as they choose. So even if, you know, the eight-foot fence is proposed here on the, that doesn't preclude the property owners of five nineteen to also build a fence if they so choose as well.
Okay, that was it, Peter.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any questions for staff at this point. So what we'll do is we'll move directly into the presentation or statement from Mr. Irwin, if you would like to take it away. I will time you. I will give you fifteen minutes maximum, and we will see what you have to say.
And do you need the ability to share screen or anything like that?
I may need the ability, but I believe I have it.
Okay, good.
Thank you. Thank you, commissioners. I appreciate the time this evening for my project here. I recognize that you have a very challenging job in addition to the building code, which fortunately is being supported by the planning department. You've got to temper subjective aesthetic preferences, and thirdly, promote harmony and cooperation among neighbors, and each of those is a job unto themselves and challenging. I was impressed with what the planning department has done in this whole process. I've been working with Martha for fourteen months or so, and certainly they are experts at the, at the code, the building code and what needs to be required. And I was very happy to find yesterday, when a couple of the commissioners came by to visit, that they had skills in architecture and, and building as well, and so really brought some professional skills to the, to the scenario as well. So I really appreciate what you guys are bringing to the table. And I recognize that there's some neighbor issue that is the elephant in the room, and I'm sorry that that is mucking the whole thing up, and we will address that. So first of all, who am I? I was born and raised in Marin. I'm a graduate of Redwood High. I returned to Marin after some career adventures around the areas, and I've been a math teacher at Tam High for the last twenty-three years. I love Quater Madera. I love the walkability, and I love the parade, being on the parade route and able to have, host a barbecue for my friends and family is, is a true joy, and I love the sky at night. That's one of my favorite things as well as about, about my area. I've had very good relationships with all my neighbors until December of this year's relationship fracture with Zarcos. I would say I had a good relationship with them as well for the last nine years. I've been very involved in the community, soccer coach, softball coach, attending the father-daughter dances, and I've been the block captain for the neighborhood response group since its inception for the block of Tamalpa- of Tamalpais and a little further. I am a divorced father with two girls who attend Neil Cummins and Hall, and my plan is to stay in this community for the rest of my days. I really enjoy it, so I want to make my house work for that. So the question becomes, why expand? Well, I need a second bathroom. At the corner of it, that's really it. I bought this home in two thousand and eleven, and I had two children under four years old. They're now ten and thirteen, and my thirteen-year-old uses the bathroom for an extended period of time. And I love Quater Madera. I want to make this work, but we need a bigger bedroom. One of our bedrooms is only about eighty square feet and barely fits a single bed, and the single bathroom isn't enough for us, so we need to expand for those reasons. The expansion primarily adds a master bedroom and bath and addresses some of the shortcomings of this almost hundred-year-old home. So we'll be redoing the roof, much of the roof, replacing the poorly insulated west-facing wall, fire sprinklers, electrical panel updates, and the front steps and some other code issues that are, you know, they were okay back in twenty-six, but they're really not appropriate for now, so this project would allow me to fix that. I do park my car in the rear parking pad coming off the alley, and as a result, this redwood deck would serve as a primary entry day in and day out to come into the house. And of course, it also allows an indoor-outdoor living to highlight the natural beauty that we have here in Marin, and I have a really fortunate view of Mount Tam, and I want to capitalize on that. The ADU, of course, would provide higher-density housing to our neighborhood for people that are looking for a place to live that's walking distance to services and library and parks and public transit. When I bought the house, it had an empty lot next to it, and Quater Madera had already collapsed them into one, but the county had not. So that was one of my first things, was to turn them into one property address. The prior owner had hoped to split the property, subdivide it, and sell off one of the property pieces, and when that wasn't allowed, that's why he sold to me. But the plan has always been expansion. I talked about it from day one. In fact, I hosted a barbecue with both of my adjacent neighbors soon after purchasing the house and talked about it then, but I've really actively pursued it over the last five years. I had three failed starts with a couple of prefab developers thinking that I could bring in modular homes, and it just didn't work out. I had one local architect who needed a shoulder surgery and had to bow out, and it's been a long haul. But I've been working with Green Bay builders for the last two and a half years or so, spent a year getting the plans really where I wanted them, and in the last fourteen months with Martha, getting the plans to a point where they addressed the needs of Quater Madera, and I think we're in a good space now. I have really tried to keep communication with the neighbors open at every major development I've shared with, certainly Zarcos on the one side and Amy McKee on the other side, any significant development that have come up. And I did make accommodations along the way. I didn't build a second-story part of the home looking out over the Zarcos property, and the deck is twenty-one feet from the property line, where the addition is thirty-three feet from the property line. So I really tried to leave a large barrier setback space to that. The first-floor ADU has limited windows on that side. In fact, I didn't put any in the bathroom on that wall. I put the mirror there instead so that there wouldn't be any windows facing that way, and the two windows that are there are clear story. We do have a vegetation barrier now that's just about the eight feet that, that I'm applying for as a fence, and I think that that eight feet provides really good privacy. In my experience, when I stand where the deck is, I can't see anything of the floor of their backyard. I can't even see the top of the fence line over there. I did invite Zarcos to come see that, and they said that they had what they needed already. So where we are, as I understand it from the planning commission's report, excuse me, the planning department's report, the proposal falls within line of the code and requirements, with the exception of the front stairs. A variance is requested to make these stairs safer and matching code, and that the planning department has suggested this plan be approved with two conditions, augmenting the vegetation fence to ensure it's not seasonal to help protect privacy in the bedroom, condition number. Augmenting the vegetation fence to ensure it's not seasonal to help protect privacy in the bedroom, condition number eleven, and reduce the size of my southern southwestern edge of the deck, condition number ten. I'm going to share my screen now with a couple of things. Oops, disabled participant screen sharing. Adam, would you please authorize me? Thank you.
Should be good now, I think.
Got it. So this is that view from standing on the orange tape, looking into my neighbor's yard at 519 Tamalpais. It appears to me as a six foot tall person that I'm not looking down into their yard. But I understand that the planning department has requested that I offer a compromise by reducing some of the decking on the backside. And I'm willing to do that. This is what I had proposed. The blue is a portion that's slightly less wide, ten feet, eleven inches, and the green is twelve foot, one inches on the north end. Both of them are twenty-one and a half feet setback. I would prefer to move it into a width of eight feet. In my mind, that allows the two foot French doors to open up and still have a reasonable walking space for people going in both directions to the side of that. I know that forty-eight inches is the ADA requirement, so theoretically could go down to six feet, but I think that eight foot accomplishes the mission of demonstrating compromise, willing to compromise, which I think is really what we're doing here. I would be open to either doing it this way, which only takes it to the length of, you'll see on the right hand side where all that foliage is in my picture. There's also a yellow image and that's where the Zarco house begins. And the concern was my looking into the backyard from there. So by removing that purple width, what we're doing is reducing the width where it would look into the backyard. But if the commission so deemed, I would even do this and go the whole length of that ten foot, ten inch section to an eight foot width instead. Keeping the green section at its twelve foot, one inch. So in summary, I think the project matches the size and design style for the lot. The neighborhood and the existing home seems to comply with all the codes and policies except for the variance which we've requested. I think it provides generous setbacks for the neighbors with concerns over privacy. And I'm happy to comply with the two stated conditions of approval from the planning department. Reducing the size of the southwestern portion of the deck to eight feet and replacing any privacy vegist, replacing any damaged vegetation and in fact, augmenting it to make privacy vegetation along the western property bounds. That's all I've got.
Well, thank you, Mr. Irwin. That's fairly concise and to the point. So and no one else on your side is geared up to make any presentation of that, correct?
I do have Lance, who is my civil engineer engineer and draftsman who can answer any specific questions, but I don't think he has anything particular to present.
Okay. Very good. Well, in the interest of making sure that we get the questions when we can get to them, I'm going to ask commissioners if they have any questions of, you know, for reason of clarity for you at the moment. So if there's any thing that is unclear, I'm going to ask commissioners to ask you. So Phil.
The two possible changes that you mentioned for the deck width. Have you discussed that with the neighbor?
I have not. The neighbors have told me that they would honor what the city says. They said that they want to have the city make a decision. I'd be happy to talk with them. So far my efforts have been met with resistance.
Thank you.
Okay. Dr. Bundy, do you have any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, Chris, in viewing both properties the other day and realizing as it often is, you know, we have concerns from everybody in regard to views and privacy and sunlight and privacy seems to be one of the major issues here. It would appear that the exposure on the deck creates a certain sense that privacy is being lost at 519. Have you considered a solid railing on on the western side of the deck? This would not impact your views of Mount Tam or looking further to the west, but would create, I think, a better sense of privacy on the part of your neighbor.
I'd be happy to make that concession if that were of interest to them. My understanding is the issue is people standing on the deck. So I'm not sure that would address their issue, but that's a very reasonable suggestion and I would be happy to accommodate in that way.
No further questions. Thank you, Bob. Margaret, do you have any questions for this gentleman from after his presentation?
I don't. Thanks, Peter.
All right. Well, thank you, Margaret. And finally, Mr. Rizzo.
Yes. I just wanted to confirm that the 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 fence was going to was going to be rebuilt property line to property line at eight feet. That was the proposal. And wherever that where wherever that secondary fence lies, it lies. It either stays or goes. Is that the proposal?
So in our discussions with the neighbors, they had said that they wanted an eight foot privacy fence. They wanted my support some three years ago when I presented this to them. One of the conditions they asked for me to support this was that we would together build an eight foot fence. So all along, it's been an assumption that we would collaborate in this process. And I think what several commissioners have mentioned is that it's really unclear where the property boundary is right now and whether it should replace what appears to be their chain link fence, which I think is three feet tall. Or the wooden fence underneath all the ivy, which I believe is mine on my side, or both of them. In terms of privacy, I think we need to fix the vegetation and make it a nice cohesive thing so that privacy is paramount. And then we need to discuss as neighbors and figure out how we want to address the fence line. I think it was Phyllis who gave the good suggestion that by putting the fence on the chain link now, it would be an engineering marvel because on the side of the south end of 519's yard, in addition to the eight feet up, it would have to be three feet further to match their reduced elevations. And that eleven foot fence would require a substantial foundation, almost a retaining wall of some sort. And so Phyllis's suggestion was that I could just contribute a foot of my land to have that fence move in about a foot into my land. And in that way, it would be a stable depth and allowing for an eight foot fence that wouldn't require an engineering marvel and still provide that eight foot level of privacy. In the event that the Zarcos and I were were going to go forward with a fence like that and we were agreed to both pay for that, I would be happy to contribute my land towards that process.
We're wandering into territory here. Jim?
Yeah, I just I just wanted to know if the fence went, it was going to be built from property line to property line.
Right, right. Okay.
There was no, there's not a topographical map for the new project and looking through your sections, it looks like the grading would create a pit around the house. Was that your intention?
Pit around the existing house or around the ADU?
Well, the sections that were were put were included in the drawings show that you're going to be cutting a lot of the grading, a lot of the yard around the new addition rather than doing retaining walls around the around the new addition. And 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 if you do that, it's gonna you're going to be sloping into the house.
And so your your concern is about runoff and water getting.
Wondering why you would do that and not just build retaining walls. It could create problems. I just was wondering if that was the intention.
It was not an intention. Honestly, I I don't have that level of precision. Lance, do you have any information on that per se?
Just a lot of dirt being moved.
Yeah, I, there was we were trying to avoid a retaining wall just for cost of the project initially. We did the grading according to the requirements for the ADU, trying to keep it below fifty percent of the volume. I don't think it's shown on the plan, but what would probably need to happen is a French drain on the backside of the ADU there to divert water around and out towards the front property line.
Okay, and I have two more questions. Sorry, guys. Were there any considerations on the board to address some of the some of the street? To to break down the mass of the of the front facade. It seems to be one big, long facade and it's not really broken up that much with like a an entry porch to the ADU or storage or some kind of gabled end to the living room or or some sort of architectural features?
The intention was honestly to match the shape and design of the previous home. And I agree, it is a larger scale of it. But we kept the roof the same line and slope and tried to keep it looking kind of a consistent. I didn't want to jump out. I didn't want to be a standout showpiece. I wanted it to be somewhat blended. The the entry to the ADU will either be behind the existing fence line that's there, the fence running east and west or behind hedges. I will have some protection from that, so it won't be showing directly to the street.
Okay. Peter, I I have one more question, but it's regarding what was written in one of those letters regarding the neighbors addition in the future.
And, okay.
Question.
No, I don't want to get into the the addition in the future stuff. We'll talk about that. And I want to bifurcate that as clearly as possible. That's great. So thank you. All right. So Chris, thank you for your presentation and for bearing under the questions here. So what we do now is that we go to public comment on this. And it looks like we have Sarah Jane on the the line as a commenter. So I'm I'm sure she's got a number of things to say. Chris, you've had plenty of time and I appreciate that. So we'll let Sarah, I'll give her ten minutes because she's really the sole commenter, I think, that we have here. We have no other emails probably and certainly I don't see any chats coming up. So anyway, so Sarah Jane. Adam, if you want to admit her and let her speak.
Yeah, one second. I'm all right, Sarah Jane. Let's see, I'm gonna should be allowed to talk now.
Yes.
Okay, great.
So first of all, I think y'all, you guys have been amazing and I appreciate everybody who came out to the property and actually looked at it. Looking tonight at the pictures, it looks very different from when you're in the house and you're looking. And I think if you can see somebody, they can see you. That's my big thing. Also, I want to thank you, James, because I hadn't thought of the water and I should have. The water on that property is a huge problem. Already I my backyard is a nightmare because I'm dealing with the city because I've got other neighbors dumping water onto our property because we're the lowest point. And making sure that that property is graded properly and drainage is not coming towards us is huge in my mind. And I don't know what I was thinking. Thank you. So basically, I I don't want to keep you guys long. My issue is is really privacy. And I think, you know, Chris and I, we did have a great relationship. But he has a vision for his property going forward that he's not willing to bend on, not really. And I would like to see that that back deck reduced as much as possible to maintain as much privacy as possible. I am concerned about the statement if the the shrubbery is damaged or the tree is damaged between the fence. I'm also concerned if he builds a fence four feet in. Do I have to check with him before I trim every tree in between his fence and my house? Who's taking ownership of that property if he's not building the fence on the property line? And there are things we can do to build it on that cement fence if we need to. The one that is currently there on the retaining wall. But I would prefer that there's one fence on the property line, or if he's going to move it back towards his property, that he seeds that property and we can care for it without constant argument and fire danger from the brush that is accumulating there. And I appreciate y'all of you and I don't really have much more to say. I'm not super fancy. Just me. I would just say that his addition is more than my entire house is big. And he's got two girls and I have four kids. And we've been living in that eight hundred square foot house, all six of us. It's very tight. And in the future, we really do need to expand. And we'll appreciate your help at that point. That's it.
Sarah, thank you very much. All right. So Adam, do you show any other commenters anywhere in email or online?
I don't know, Martha, are you still tracking the public comment email?
Just checked it, just in case Martha isn't able to. And there are no public comments submitted via email.
Thank you, Lorena.
That's great. Okay, so then what we'll do is that I see no hands up again, so we'll just close public comment and take this back to the commission. So a couple of preparatory statements here, and I think that we have heard a lot of the discussion between the two property owners. And I would like to say that anything about future additions or any ideas of that would be territory that we're not going to get into at this point. And I think Adam would echo that from me. I would also say that all of this discussion about the fence can be distracting as well. And I think that it's quite clear that we don't know where the property line is out there in the field. And neither do either one of the property owners know exactly where that is. That said, the property line could be anywhere. It could be into 519 property. It could be over on 525 property. We don't know, but I would I would endeavor to say that we should say that the application being for an eight foot fence should be an eight foot fence put on the property line, wherever that may be, and relative to the grade of 525. And that we should consider that as the the standard by which we would be reviewing the application, I think. Adam, you any comment on that?
Well, just just one caveat. I mean, just per our rules and we've been through this fence height discussion. It it is possible. And again, we we're not sure exactly at this point, but it may be the case that once grading does occur, and if it goes out essentially to the property line of 525, that the elevation in which you're measuring the height of eight foot of eight feet. As you know, it's the higher finished grade. So it could be in some portions of the site, it could be eight feet relative to the finished grade on 519. And then likely as you move towards the south portion of the property, it likely is going to be eight feet from the finished grade on 525 property. But that will be part of the discussion as well. But there is due to the grading, we just can't determine that exact location of the where eight feet is measured from directly adjacent to the structure where the ADU and the structures existing structure of 519 is currently located. But eight feet will be eight feet. And I think the intention is really that it's additional, the maximum height a fence can be on a property line, thereby giving the most privacy that is actually possible with a side property fence.
Okay. Thank you. So we have before us.
Peter.
Yes, just a moment. Yeah.
Okay. Adam, for what he just said. If we're not quite sure of where the property line is, the vegetation, for lack of a better word, do we know whose property that is on?
No, we don't right now.
And what if, yeah, when you are talking about if we put into the resolution, the fence should be built on the property line, what if it's in the middle of that visit vegetation? I mean, you saw the diameter of some of that ivy.
Well, here's what I'm thinking. Here's how I would define this is that the property line could be there, it could be anywhere. And if if we're going to follow staff And if, if we're going to follow staff recommendation, which I believe personally we should. Um, but I leave each one of you to, uh, opine on that. Um, and to enhance or detract from the, the re- recommended, uh, condition. I, I personally think that, you know, that vegetation would be sacrificed during not only construction, but that it should be taken out and we should insist on having, uh, a clean set of replacement vegetation, much as the resolution is drafted for, that we would put in, um, a requirement for a certain size vegetation and spacing of the vegetation along that fence. And it would replace anything that's there.
Peter, can we say that we wish to have the vegetation removed or replaced with, and then say the size, the type or anything like that? Is it okay to say maybe, and it's better at answering this, can we say we want that vegetation removed?
Um, i- if I may speak, um, the vegetation, it sounds like may partially be on the property of five nineteen. Who is not.
No.
Not likely, but.
We, we don't know. I mean, we could require that they build on a, on the property line and they come up with a survey verifying that they are on the property line, but they would only be able to, um, remove vegetation that is on their side of that line.
Good point. Right. So that said, if the vegetation ended up being on five nineteen, then they're free to remove it. Um, and we would be free to state that we want vegetation placed on five twenty-five that would grow up as a stream.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Thank you.
Um. I forgot what I was gonna say, but, um, we are, we are looking at, um, two, uh, possible, um, proposals from, uh, Mr. Earlin there for, um, a uh, reduced deck size just in front of the bedroom or a larger reduced deck size for the, uh, for a longer southerly portion of the deck there. So he's made the concessions there in two forms as to following the staff's recommendation that the deck size be reduced in the southern portion of the property there. Um, and, um, Bob has brought forth the possibility of a solid railing. Um, and you've heard, uh, the comment that, um, that may not impact you. Um, I would support it only that it would help reduce noise and, uh, the sense of transparency for that height, forty-two inch guardrail going around the property. Um, so I'm gonna go to each of you and ask you, um, what you think about this at this point. After we've heard all of this and, um, I've inserted my commentary. So. Um. Let's see, Margaret, you're there. It's getting late, but you're there.
Um, I, I guess I'm, I'm a little confused because if there's been a survey done, which they said there was a survey done, how could they not know where the fence should be?
Um, I will venture to answer that question right off the bat and just say that surveys are not a very good survey. It doesn't show the landmarks on the plan page that would identify in the field where that property line is actually. So if you're standing there with a piece of paper in your hand, you can't look at the property and identify where the fence is. It's lacking that information on the survey.
And, and if, um, if the applicant were to follow Phyllis's suggestion, which I think is a very good one, because it sort of gives the neighbor uh, something that's valuable for any, perhaps it's a, a play off of la- of loss of privacy. That would establish a new property line. Is that correct? No.
Not necessarily. No. And we can't really can't really go down that path with this fence location. Now, that's not our, uh, purview. Our purview is to approve of eight foot fence on the, on the property.
Well, I guess I have a hard time. I would have a hard time approving an eight foot fence on the property if the, where the property is, is unclear. Um, I, I, I think there's no way to really enforce the enforcement of the, uh, building permits would be virtually impossible. Because if you don't know where the property line is and an eight foot fence has to be on the property line, what are you left with?
Well, we can condition the approval to say that they have to establish the property line in the field out there. That's what we can do.
And, and I think I would absolutely say tha- that that has to be done, especially given the the problems that seem to have risen, which is a very disturbing thing between neighbors that used to get along and now clearly there's some animosity there. And, um, and that's, you know, unfortunate. And so I guess my feeling at this point is putting everything else aside, anything that would, uh, be compromised for those neighbors who feel their property, their, uh, privacy is being lost would be something we, we should support. Or I would support anyway.
Mm-hmm.
Um. I, you know, I don't think it's the aesthetics of the whole thing. I realize we, we don't get into much, but, um, it's not, in my opinion, it's not terribly attractive addition, one way or the other. That's all.
Well, let me ask you this. Um, you're able to make the findings for the addition in itself?
Yes.
Okay. And the variance, do you have any issue with the variance upfront?
No.
Okay. Um, so the, the issue for you arises along the fence on the perimeter there.
Almost totally, yes.
Yeah, okay. Good. All right. Um, Mr. Rizzo, I'm interested in your thoughts here.
I don't want to talk too much about the fence, but, um, I, Adam, in, in our current code, are we supposed to step back the, the front yard setbacks, the, the side yard fence and the front yard setback to a certain height typically? Or does it usually just go six foot the whole way as, as the typical fence?
Sorry, the, you're saying this fence, I'm gonna step back. I'm not following.
Okay, so I got in some jurisdictions, the first twenty feet in the fr- in the front yard setback will have to be four feet. And then would step up. I was wondering if this, if what we're considering is from property line to property line. That's, that was kind of my original question. Um, does the eight foot go all the way to the sidewalk?
Oh, yeah, no. Um. I, I would, I think Martha can speak to it a little bit better, but I.
Backing to this, um, out of the, the. That the eight foot fence would, it would not be located in that first twenty feet in the front yard portion of the lot. It would begin, um, once you get past the front yard and would extend from that point to the, the, the southern property boundary.
Do, have we established what height it would be in the front twenty feet?
The zoning ordinance allows four feet in that portion of the lot.
Okay.
And just for clarity, Martha, was, is there a proposal to build a fence in the front? Front yard?
I, I don't, I don't believe, uh, there is currently, um.
Right. That's, okay.
That the code would allow for up to a four foot fence.
I don't think there, and there is no fence there today, correct?
There is.
I mean, no, in between the properties in the front yard.
No.
There is. There's a chain link fence. There's a chain link. It's the four.
Okay.
About three, probably three feet tall chain link fence.
Gotcha. Thanks.
Okay. So my other comments, I, I think I, I kind of touched on it. I really feel like, um, the design could include a few more architectural details to, to break down the, the mass of the house. There's a lot of there's a lot of smaller houses, um, along that street frontage. Um, and I, I know that we have a really big lot to work with and the palette. Um, there's a lot of opportunities to do some different things, especially on the front of that house. Um, specifically, uh, you know, we've got this huge deck which could have been incorporated in the front of the house and set back the volume into the back of the house. And everybody would have gotten what they wanted. Um, could have had views and we could have had privacy. Um, and we could have broken down the mass of the building a little bit. So I, I, I think there could have been a bit more uh, work, uh, completed to really break down the mass of that front of the house, which, which brings me to the findings of, um, you know, is this, is this house harmonious with the existing and the future development of adjacent properties in the vicinity? Um, I, you know, I might have a little bit of trouble making that finding just, just because it, it is so massive, but um, and, and since the primary deck is looking into this, into the neighbor's house, which is downhill, um, does create some privacy issues. So, um, you know, I kind of feel like they, we, we could work with the facade a little bit to make it, you know, feel a little bit more like, uh, more harmonious with the neighborhood, which is part of our policy, CD two point four A. So I, I would like to hear the rest of the commissioners before I can make my findings. Thank you.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Jim. All right, uh, Dr. Bundy, um, where do you land?
Well, um, in responding to, uh, Jim, you know, I think the fact that a lot of the front facade is the ADU, which we actually don't have, uh, any say in. And I guess, uh, uh, impacts the way the front facade, uh, looks to a certain extent. And, uh, you know, maybe some of that can be broken up with, uh, vegetation, the hedge and everything that Chris was talking about. The, uh, the fence, as I understand it from, uh, Chris, uh, he is willing to have the fence on the elevated part of the property, uh, the elevated grade as opposed to the five nineteen grade. Uh, not dependent on necessarily where the property line is. So, um, I think with, uh, Peter in that I'm in favor of an eight foot, uh, privacy fence, uh, along the upper grade. Uh, whether or not it's exactly on the property line or not, I don't think is the important part of it. In, uh, looking at, uh, the deck and the privacy, the southern part of the deck, uh, the entrance stairs is going up, uh, the bedroom is right there. The, um, major gathering area, I think for the family is probably going to be, uh, more towards the center or, or even towards the front, because that's where the accordion, uh, doors are opening up and that's where I think I would see most of the.
Oh, Bob, you froze up.
What a night with the.
Groundlings are out.
Coming and go. Um, I don't know if he can hear us or not, um, but we'll move on from Bob and come back to him. So Phyllis, I'm going to go over to you.
Okay.
And, uh, hear what you have to say.
All right.
Gated, uh, our tradition.
There's Bob, he's sort of.
Back. Okay.
Bob, if you can hear me, um.
Uh, exactly. Yeah.
Um. We're gonna, we're gonna skip by you and wait to you though. You might have to re-sign in. Yep, that's what he's gonna do. Okay. Go ahead, Phyllis.
Okay, uh, number one, I would like part of the resolution to specifically say that the property line has to be established in the field itself. I think that's very important. Um. My preference would be for one fence, if we have any say in it. I am concerned about the so-called vegetation. I think it's a health hazard. If it is true that there rats running in there and stuff like that, I think that we cannot ignore it. And I don't know what department from the town would be in charge of it. I'm sure Adam is thinking, please don't let it be planning. Maybe, maybe public. Or, I think, I don't know. I do think, I, I hate to say send my priority out there, but I you know, it's not that it's aesthetically unattractive. I think we all can agree that it is. I seriously do think it's a health hazard. And if work is being done on that property, it probably, I mean, Peter and I were talking about having a greater, you know, out there grading the property. Maybe you could just pull all that stuff out. I, I just think, take advantage of the fact that it can be done now easily, then come back later or even trying to trim it back and cut it. It's only going to grow back. The, the, uh, couple of trees that are there are supposed to be about a hundred years old. This was an orchard and this is the end of their lifespan. If they, their lifespan was over a long time ago and they just kept on holding on. But as I say, I'm really concerned. I don't know how we approach it, what we say, if it goes in the resolution or not, but I definitely think we have to consider getting rid of that vegetation as we keep on calling it. And then since, uh, Martha put into the resolution that if, if it was harmed or I forget the exact wording, it has to be replaced. I think that is very important that it should be replaced, not just have it taken out and look at things like, um, pitus forum that I had at the house I had in Kentfield, which grows almost like a weed to twenty feet before you blink your eyes. But to say, we've said before, what size pots they go in, what height they want, that we should work with something like that. I'm glad to see the applicant is willing to reduce part of the size of the deck. I I know you showed two different ones. I wish we could see them up. Because I wouldn't, aesthetically, I wouldn't want to see three measurements of width. I'd want to have just two. And I think one of the plans that was shown had three different measurements from east to west. And I'd go with the one that was two. And, um, pretty much takes care of these things. Um, I agree with, uh, Bob Bundy about the solid railing toward the deck. I think the, uh, neighbor would like that and so would the applicant in the long run. It makes a difference. So that's about it.
Very good. That's all good thoughts and, uh, address everything that we, almost everything that we've brought to bear so far. So, uh, Bob, you're back. Um, so I don't know where you know you've got frozen, but, uh, you can continue on.
Well, I, I think I was making the, the case that, uh, Phyllis, uh, also, uh, seconded the idea of having a solid railing on the west side of the deck. The, uh, uh, north and south sides could be balusters as they are depicted. Uh, I would not be quite as concerned about, uh, narrowing the south part of the deck if the railing is solid, just because to me that doesn't seem like a gathering spot, uh, for uh, the household or for, you know, people at, uh, at an event. Uh, but that would be my recommendation to have, uh, condition twelve, which is the, uh, west, uh, west of the, uh.
Bob, you're freezing up again on us. Oh, you're back. You say that again about condition twelve, please.
A, a condition twelve would be the, uh, west railing of the deck would be solid. The, uh, north and south could be, uh, uh, as described.
Okay. Anything else?
I, I was, if that was the, that condition was, uh, accepted, I could see, uh, leaving the width of the deck as it is originally, uh, drawn. Uh, just because I don't see, uh, people congregating there and, uh, less of a privacy issue.
Okay. All right. So, um, I come down to this, uh, on the side of. Uh, one requiring that the property, the, the property line be surveyed and staked in the field as a condition of approval. And that on that line of the property, uh, an eight foot fence is erected. As allowed by the town ordinance. Um, from front to back with the exception of the front yard setback. Um, if that's where the fence was to go all the way out to the front. Wherever that property line falls, even if it falls on five nineteen, which it seems highly unlikely, but it might. Then the grade for the eight foot should be determined. For the higher elevation there, five twenty-five. I don't know if that works with the town, but you know, that's where the eight foot fence. The applicant is making that eight foot fence application. So it would be his property to, um, relate the, the height of the fence to. I would also then, uh, state that the vegetation along the property line, uh, be removed. Uh, unless it's on five nineteen property, in which case five nineteen would then probably come in and remove it. They, they think it's on five twenty-five's property right now. So if it ended up being on five nineteen, then they would feel free to remove it. Um, if it, if it's on five twenty-five property, um, they should definitely go in there and just remove that when they're doing the excavation. It would take them probably half a day to dig all that out and haul it off, um, with the right equipment while they're doing the excavation. I think that along the fence, we would then recommend the establishment of. Uh, either pitus forum or potocarpus, uh, evergreen material. In, uh, fifteen gallon size spaced every four feet along that fence. And that would grow up, um, fairly quickly. Um, I wouldn't go so far as to require two foot box, but fifteen gallon size would be appropriate. And then be established in four foot spacing along the property line where there is an eight foot fence. That would grow in a couple of years to be, um, a pretty significant, uh, privacy hedge. So that said, I would also accept the applicant's, um, uh, deck reduction, um. Number one, which would reduce his master bedroom deck by a two foot dimension. I believe that's what it was. Is P number one. And I would, uh, incorporate the solid railings as a condition of approval as well. So that's where, um, I come down on all of these different issues. Um, that we're, uh, able to. Offer our approval of those.
Uh, there already is a fence. I- in the front of the house. I don't remember right now off the top of my head how far it goes, but it's more than four feet. And I assume that the applicant will be leaving that fence. You know, maybe do a continuation to the property line when it's established. But I, it's more than four feet tall, that fence. It's at least six foot.
In front of the property?
Yes, there is a fence. There's a gate in it.
Well, it's a fence that is not a part of the application really, um, and, uh, he, he would. He's free to do with that fence what he wants. I, I believe it must, it counts as if you take it down, you gotta follow, uh, a new fence.
I, but Peter, if, let's say that fence is six foot tall and that's just a guesstimate on my part. If we're saying that the beginning of the fence along the property line. With going from the front line of the property on Tamil pious has to be four feet. Going to, I mean, we're going to have a six foot fence, a four foot fence, an eight foot fence. I mean, that's. Not very attractive and.
Right.
Look pretty ridiculous. That's what I'm saying. There is a fence there that maybe, uh, Chris can tell us how tall it is. And say, it's my guess that it's a six footer. And, uh, I think we should at least have the beginning of the fence on the property line. Between five nineteen and five twenty-five at the same height as the fence that's in the front. Or we're going to have these choppy fences all over the place.
Well, we can't have the fence, the town ordinance doesn't allow for a six foot fence and the setback, the front setback. It has to be four foot there.
It could be a variance.
I'll actually interject, uh, the code does allow for a six foot tall fence and a front setback with approval of a designer view. So it's a very similar process to how you can have an eight foot tall fence along a side or your property boundary with designer view. You can go up to six feet in the front step back with designer view approval.
Okay. So he could apply for that separately.
It would have to be separate.
For a staff level designer view for, for Adam shaking his head.
Oh, the staff can do that?
Get to apply for it separately, yeah. Not part of this application.
Okay.
Okay.
And you can't get, you, you're not gonna, that'd be a voluntary action at this point, just.
What, what, what do you mean voluntary? Who's volunteering?
Because it's a separate application, we can't assume that it's going to be, it's a, it's a separate discretionary permit. Um, that would have to be evaluated on its own merits. It's not evaluated under the current application. Right? It's not part of the purview of what we're looking at right now.
All right. No, I understand that, but the, this applicant can come back and say. I want the first twenty feet or whatever it is to be the same height of.
Six feet.
Six.
Up to.
The mat, to match with, I'm assuming is six foot across, you know, facing Tamil pious at this time.
Right. Okay. So that's a possibility, but that's up to the applicant and we're not considering that at this time.
Okay.
So.
I just didn't want us to preclude it from happening at any time.
No. So, um. I've, I've sort of run through the different elements of the, uh, what I would propose as, uh, conditions of approval. It's the site survey. It's the fence. It's the planting. And it's the deck, uh, option number P one and the handrail be solid.
P, and just P one, just for clarity, was that?
Reduction at the master end of that deck.
Right, for hat, for the, basically the, the southern portion of the deck reduction. Okay.
Oh. Um, Bob.
I wanted to get a little more clarification on what you were saying in relationship to the fence on the property line. Um, are you suggesting that, uh, if the, uh, property line, uh, crosses over. Uh, between five nineteen and five twenty-five, that the eight foot fence should go all the way down to the grade. At, uh, five nineteen? Or would you allow Chris to continue the fence on his property line at the elevated grade? So it's easier to install.
That's up to these guys. We're just gonna say we want, we're gonna allow an eight foot fence. They'd have, it would be, uh. Surveyed first to determine where the property line is and then the eight foot fence would be relative to, uh. Mr. Irland's property elevation.
Uh, okay. We're in agreement.
Okay. All right.
Peter, are you gonna put together wording about the replacement planting?
Yes.
For the resolution, so, you know, the fifteen gallons, the four foot apart placement, pitus forum. Or you mentioned another, uh, type of tree.
So condition number eleven says vegetation screening. And I would revise the, uh, condition to say that the existing landscaping be replaced by. We were, western existing landscaping dot, 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 along the western property boundary adjacent to the residential structure. Would be replaced by pitus forum or potocarpus or similar material. Space, uh, installed with fifteen gallon size material at a four foot, uh, spacing.
And I think just for clarity on. The way it's worded, it was intended to be on that, the, the vegetation would be on the five twenty-five side of the fence. But in the area for the, that is sort of opposite the structure at five, five nineteen. So it doesn't necessarily go all the way up the backyard. Now, if you, that was just, I believe the intent of it. Cause those are, that's where the windows are. Uh, for the. But it clearly, it, it can. Plant it on a hive's property.
Okay, um, I was trying to, uh, divine that from the wording there. Shall be planted on the project site along this portion. Of the western property boundary in order to extend privacy screening above fence height. So. The existing landscaping would be replaced. On the five twenty-five property. With evergreen shrubs. Parenthesis, potocarpus or pitus forum, parentheses. Uh, I'm sorry, in fifteen gallon size, parentheses. Planted, shall be planted on the project site along this portion of the western property boundary in order to extend privacy screening above fence height.
And this portion is referencing opposite. Structure or the entire length of the fence?
Yeah, so it, that's where it says along the western property boundary adjacent to the residential structure of five nineteen. Tamil pious, yes.
Okay, gotcha.
That's not going to have it in the backyard just along with the residences.
It can't, yeah. Property owner.
Okay. So that would be that portion of, um, a resolution and we would, uh, have a, a. Uh, condition that the, uh. Property line be surveyed and staked in the field to determine the location of the fence.
And have.
And that is.
This solid, uh, railing.
Yeah, just, just so you know, uh, you can look at condition number fifteen. Which talks about, um. Upon issuance of the building permit, the property line and setback location at areas of construction must be identified on site by licensed land surveyor. Or registered civil engineer. And then we get, that's the staking of the property lines has been properly be completed. And we, yeah.
That would cover it. That would cover it.
Yeah, that says it.
Yeah, okay. So we don't need to add that.
We put in the, uh, solid railing.
We would.
Number ten, I think you can put modified num, condition of approval, number ten.
Peter?
Yeah, Bob.
Uh, I would suggest that the planted vegetation continue past the house, uh, further to the south. Uh, to provide some privacy for the backyard.
Yeah. That's what I was asking about.
Okay, well. That would be a worthwhile recommendation to add to the, to that condition.
So.
Margaret?
So Peter. Just to be, just because I needed to be clearer, you're saying that the property line has to be established.
Right.
And once it's established, an eight foot fence can be, should be constructed on the property line. Is that, is that what we're saying?
Correct.
So if it, it becomes a problem that, that it's not the right. That if the problem starts out that it's going to be an eleven foot fence on the other side, which is what I'm hearing. It says. What are we gonna do?
It's an eight foot fence that is constructed relative to the grade at five twenty-five. If it becomes an, an eleven foot fence, uh, on the five nineteen side, then that's what it becomes. But they don't construct an, an eleven foot fence. Um, it, unless the property boundary is well off.
Right, but that, that basically puts up a wall for the people at five nineteen. I mean, uh, there's a huge difference between an eight foot fence and an eleven foot fence. So basically what's gonna happen is if those people. But i- if it happens that. I, I'm just not really feeling very good about telling. About thinking that those people might have an eleven foot fence in their backyard. It, it just doesn't seem. I, I really don't feel comfortable with that at all.
Well, it's, uh, on top of, I mean, five nineteen is lower by, we'll say, three feet. So at the, at the very back there, so an eight foot fence on top of the five twenty-five grade amounts to an eleven foot.
Eleven foot, which is a wall.
Yeah.
Which is a.
And right now they have, uh, all of that vegetation there, which is definitely eight foot as it is. So the vegetation represents what would be an eight foot fence on that property line wall right now. So they, they wouldn't experience anything different, potentially. It would just be a fence and then vegetation would be behind it to grow up higher, provide more screening.
Well.
And your point.
We don't really know where the, the property line is, whether the vegetation is on the property line or not, or whose property it is. I'm not, I guess I'm not comfortable with, with not knowing where that property line is and not knowing what kind of fence is gonna be there.
Okay.
I, I think it's setting five nineteen up for something that might be pretty ugly to look at.
Okay, we'll come back to that in a moment. Bob's got his hand up. I want to see what he has to say.
Well, I, I think Margaret's got a, a good point. I thought what we were all saying is we wanted to see an eight foot privacy fence between the two properties. Uh, but that it could be at the upper grade of five twenty-five. So even if it's more on Chris's property, it sounded like he was willing to do that. Because the cost associated with, uh, creating, uh, a eleven foot fence to. Match the eight foot grade, uh, would be complicating. And so I just want to see an eight foot fence between the two houses at, and that I think it should be on the upper grade level. Which Chris, uh, uh, agreed to, as I understood his comments. That, that, uh, I think the property should be surveyed, but we don't necessarily have to require the fence to be on the property line. That can be a discussion between the neighbors.
Exactly, Bob. You're, you're right about that. Um, and I think that. Right, if we have the property surveyed, then they know where it is. But if the fence goes on the five twenty-five property, um, adjacent to the retaining wall that is there. So that, um, it, it, uh, is up against that retaining wall and those guys would have to agree to it. But our job is just simply to say an eight foot fence on five twenty-five is approved, um, or not.
Approved.
So I, I, I'd like the, uh, the attorney, because I see a problem there establishing a fence. That may or may not be on a property line and then. W- with no sort of legal. Fences that are just established between neighbors become property over time to someone else sometimes. And I think it, I, I'd like to hear from. And I'm a long way from my property law classes, so I'd like to hear what the modern version of it is.
Well, the modern, fortunately, property law tends to change very slowly. Um, and it is still the case that through years of occupation and so on, property belonging to one neighbor. Uh, the next door neighbor can acquire rights, but I think the implication of the conditions of approval, as they're already written. Require that the, in, that, that the parties learn where the property line is in the field. The commission would approve construction of a fence in that location at the proposed height. And then if the parties between the two of them agree that it should go elsewhere. I suspect there could be a staff level approval of that proposal, but the parties could certainly to agree to that. But the parties could certainly to agree to that. And that's for them to say if they're willing to take whatever risk goes with it. If there's, of course, something in writing that allows a fence to be built on one person's property or the other, then that would undercut any 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 argument later that there was an adverse possession.
Yeah, adverse.
Would note, though, that the issue of maintaining your property when it's on the other side of the fence becomes difficult. So generally, you want the property, the fence to be on the property line, so that it's easier to maintain on both sides.
So if one if the property line, if the fence is now on the property line and let's say it's not on the property line and five nineteen maintains a piece of land that is not part of their actual property. Do they do they come into possession over a certain number of years of that?
Not if there's something in writing.
Right.
If if you're if your use is permissive, that's the lingo, as opposed to hostile, open and notorious.
Right.
You you don't get the prescriptive rights.
Okay.
As I heard the town tell me some years ago when we were talking about the right-of-way properties, that the town doesn't sell the property. It doesn't change hands. You know, it's still somebody title still has the property just because the fence is in the wrong place.
That's correct. Well, the town, there's an interesting twist to that, which I won't belabor, but short answer is you cannot acquire prescriptive rights against a public agency. So we never have to worry about that.
Okay, thank you. All right. So. Margaret, back to your dilemma. So, you know, the fence can be agreed to by the parties, but we're saying that they have to decide where the property line is, or they have to know where the property line is, and then they can decide where the fence goes between them. We're saying that an eight-foot fence would be constructed and is is approved. But we'd leave it up to staff to interject if they come back and say, well, we're not clear, or here's our here's our needed agreement, or they resolve it between themselves without all of us.
Yeah.
I guess my concern is is there is 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 there because Ms. Zarco told the applicant that she wanted the town to decide and we were the town, and so the decision is falling on us as to whether or not we allow the possibility of an eleven of her facing an eleven-foot fence. And that's. I mean, I understand what you're saying, and I think I would approve it, but I don't feel comfortable about it, that comfortable with the with the privilege of us deciding if that's a privilege. I don't know. I think that's it. That's all.
Yeah, we have a responsibility to address the issue. Yea or nay, thumbs up or down over an eight-foot fence along the property line or wherever they agree to have. And that's where we depart, is wherever they agree to have a fence. We don't have any say in that. So if they agree to do something outside of what we approve, that's between them.
I don't know. Does everybody else feel that way, too? I I just wonder.
I don't know. Let's check in. I'll start with you, Dr. Bundy.
Yes.
Okay. Mr. Rizzo?
Are are we saying they have to agree, or can Chris just put it anywhere on his property? That's that's what I'm getting at. I think that's where Phyllis is, I mean, I'm where where Margaret is coming from is you know, if Chris does put it anywhere on his property, it could be a big a bigger issue. Are we saying?
I'd be happy to work with Azarkos to choose a spot. I know.
Exactly.
Just gonna say that.
Thanks. Thanks for interjecting.
But i- if I may interject, I think that the safest thing would do would be for the commission to approve the fence on the property line or in such alternate location as the parties may agree, but at least there's a definite approval of the.
I like that.
That makes sense. That's good.
I like that. Thank you.
Yeah, what she said. That's right.
I can hear.
Okay, all right, so.
Margaret, are you comfortable with that?
Yeah, yeah, that's okay. I just hope that they're they can agree on something that's good for both both sides. Both sides of the fence.
Okay, so where we are is we've got the fence, we've got the planting, we've got the the deck revision, and we've got the solid handrail or guardrail. So. And the variance, yes. So it's all under, as Adam pointed out to me, one motion, one resolution, I believe.
Yes.
So. Okay, who's brave?
I'll give it a shot. In the matter of resolution number twenty-one dash oh one oh. The planning commission does hereby conditionally approve major design review application PL twenty twenty dash oh one oh one DRC and variance application PL twenty-one dash oh oh six oh for a residential addition totaling one thousand eighty-one square feet and a second-story deck and eight-foot tall fence along the western side property boundary and a variance to allow an encroachment into the required front yard, front yard setback at five twenty-five Tamalpais Drive. Based upon the findings that the proposed project is in substantial conformity with the general plan and zoning ordinance. And with the conditions number ten, that the portion of the deck be reduced in size. Condition number eleven, that vegetation be planted along the fence on the westerly border with evergreen shrubs extending from the house up to provide protection for the backyard of five nineteen. And that the railing on the western edge of the deck be solid.
I'll second that, Bob. If you would agree to a slight change under number eleven, you we should mention the removal and replacement of the current vegetation and then go into the fifteen-gallon cans, how many feet apart, so the the wording that Peter used.
I would.
Four feet apart.
Yeah.
I will gladly add that.
Okay, so I'll second.
Okay, do you do you guys feel satisfied that that'll cover us?
Was the language that that Ann mentioned about the the fence
Oh, yeah.
Included in what Bob said?
I don't think that Bob mentioned that the the parties could agree to a different location.
I I think we need that.
We should add that, too.
I'll add that. Edit.
Somebody's got some typing to do.
And you'll say second it again.
I'll second it. And Adam, when the minutes come out, it should show the whole motion and not just the motion we made to approve. So we remember what we did. That's how it reads. You have to go and watch the video to find out what the whole thing.
Okay, I'll take the I'll take the roll call. Start with Commissioner Bundy.
Yes.
Commissioner Rizzo.
Yes.
Commissioner Bendel.
Yes.
Vice Chair Metcalfe.
Yes.
Chairman Chase.
Yes.
Okay. Thank you. And Martha?
I'm gonna read the rights.
Following action by the planning commission at a public hearing or meeting, any decision of the planning commission may be appealed to the town council within ten calendar day days. Appeal forms are available at the planning department town hall, and a three hundred dollar filing fee is required.
Okay.
Peter, may I add? Before we leave this matter, I think we, as a commission, should thank our two commissioners who are on the east coast to actually join us in a three-hour later time zone, Jim and Margaret.
Yes, thank you, guys. It's midnight there.
Yeah.
So you've got a short night.
Or they've had a long day.
Thank you for joining.
Dr. Bundy, I have to say, I'm very impressed with with that motion.
If any of us can remember it, right?
Fantastic.
We'll make sure it's it's obviously recorded and written down as as stated, so.
With help, man.
Yes.
Happy to help.
Fabulous. Okay. All right, so I'm gonna say thank you, Mr. Erlen, and thank you, Sarah Jane Zarco, for your participation tonight. It's good to have participation, and we wish you the very best in getting along in the future, so let's hope that that does take place.
Thank you all very much. Really appreciate it.
Thank you.
Yeah, and staff will continue to work with both neighbors through the process and on upcoming months and years ahead.
Okay, so who's going to report on anything that took place at the county?
I am. My notes. This is the July twentieth meeting. It was. There was the acceptance of the sales tax citizens oversight committee annual report. And everything was taken care of the way it should be. They were very pleased. The commission Karen Jabosi chairs it and gave the report, and the commission is satisfied with the way the money is being spent or reserved, so we're doing quite well as a town. There were three items that had to do with personnel and those items had to do with contract, union contracts or unrepresented employees. And there essentially has been a three-year agreement with raises of two percent, three percent, three percent. And and adding to the program for the represented fifteen hundred dollars per year for wellness. It's something that the mid-management and department heads have had that has been very successful and worked well. And these raises do not include the town manager. Todd was sure to emphasize that when he gave the report. As part of Todd's reports, and very, very good news, when the books close, which would be a June thirtieth date when they do closure, there's a one point five million dollar surplus. It's really good to hear. And this is one that Todd didn't go into any particular information. Anna may want to tell us, or maybe wants to hide it from us. But Todd is looking at streamlining the process in the planning department to better serve the applicants, and I hope that doesn't mean they're doing away with us. I don't know. And that was pretty much the council's taking August off. So nobody has to report on any meetings that from August if they're on the list. That's it.
Wow, not much to say.
They didn't have much to do, but maybe Adam could explain. I'd appreciate if Adam could tell us if he knows what this planning process is that Todd mentioned as part of his report.
I think it's more on the building side. You know, this is something there is a ongoing sort of evaluation process and trying to right-size staff. And it's been a very up and, you know, it's been hard to predict exactly what we're gonna need. We've had some in terms of staffing levels, so I think that's mostly what we're talking about and trying to just really improve and get better at meeting the expectations that people really have and and our our service to our community in terms of the building permit process. It's it's been a challenge and for a variety of reasons, but I think we're we're trying to really address it in a number of ways, but primarily staffing, and then also we're we've transitioned internally to a new permit processing software, which ultimately, once we turn it on, we'll also have a public interface that will be able to people will be able to use and should be easier. So anyways, I think that's what he's referring to. If it's about the planning side, I can't say that I've been informed of it, but it was, I don't think it was a formal agenda item, right? It was more of his report.
No, it was his report.
Okay, yeah.
He mentioned it. First, he mentioned the one point five million dollar surplus, and then he said, and I am.
This is what we're gonna do, yeah. Yeah, it's we're we're at all-time highs even this year again. I mean, even though we've broken our record for number of building permits submitted the last three years, I think in a row, we're far surpassing that this year as well, and it's led to some back backlogs and it's in the process of building permits. So we're trying to address them.
That we're essential workers.
I know we are, but they don't think so at times, I guess.
No, no.
But um, my own personal report. Happily, the state legislature is gone into their summer recess. We're always safer when that happens. So SB nine and SB ten were not voted upon before they went on recess. So we've got a little bit of breathing time before it comes back. I think it's mid or end of August that they return. I'm not quite sure of the date. But they're still floating out there, those two bills, which could create some havoc with the planning, with the Madera.
Well, with that said, the the bills that we are subject to at the thirty-five and the other ones, SB nine. Which are the ones that are gonna recount it.
Oh, yeah, but they're they already SB thirty-five goes back a couple of years. They're just working at extending it and now bringing in residential properties.
Four plex on every corner. Yeah.
And one.
Right.
I I got a question, Adam. I know that this fence thing's come up several times. I'm wondering how we start requesting maybe for us to add additional information or amend the the code so we could start talking about some of these fences on the property line. I I know it's it's been treated a bunch of different ways and and other communities I've worked in that eliminate the the big eleven-foot fence by setting back fences a certain, you know, I I know there's ways to do it. How how do we direct planning to start up the process on something like that? Because I I think it's gonna come up several times in the next few years.
Well, I'd be interested in just in in seeing what you've seen, especially inside property fences. It's easy on the front.
Yeah.
Because it's your property and you can do multiple different, you know, fences, but you know, certainly there can be something on the agenda if you want to do it that way, but I'm I'm, you know, we're ultimately try happy to sort of hear if there's easier solutions, just in terms of applicant information that we could get, but I don't, you know, know if there I know the town and and staff and the community worked for several years on the fence code that we have in right now in place today, back in the, it's been a while now, but I know there's a lot of thinking behind it before, but certainly if you have ideas and and if you have seen other places where they're able to successfully do it. You know, happy to.
Yeah. It's it's just usually a formula that they have where you would set back the fence from the property line that is most impacted by the height after it gets over eight feet. So this eight-foot fence, for instance, would have been, we would have, the the code would have recommended it being set back three feet or something if there was a, you know, three-foot kind of thing. So, you know, so you never have a foot, an eight-foot fence. I'm sorry, an eight-foot fence on. But on one side and the, on the other side, you would have some sort of planting to break up the mass of the. The, the fence. I mean, that's how I've seen it done in a few communities, but there's more. If I did some research, I could find some more. Treatments to it. To kind of work on that, but that, that happened in that other application that was on redwood where the, it was on the property mine and it probably would have been another eleven foot fence. On the one that, that.
Yeah.
Did not pass.
Okay.
I, I don't know if the other commissioners feel that way, but it's gonna. You know, in some of these lots that step up the hill.
I think you then have the, the maintenance question and how you access that and if there's agreed to and all that stuff too, it becomes probably a challenge.
Well, you, you know, the person builds a retaining wall and it could just be dirt in there. It doesn't necessarily need to be vegetation. It's just a matter of that you're stepping the fence. So it's not one continuous. Fence.
You're saying the lower elevation side of the property would build the retaining wall? So then the eight foot fence would start at the top of the retaining wall?
Yes, but it would be set back. So you'd have a planter. Right? So you'd come up three feet and then you'd go three feet back and then the fence would start. So it's not. But because then, you know, if you only have a five foot setback from the, from the house to the fence. You know, it, it's gonna be right up against your house, but if you set that back, you're gonna let more light into the house that's being, you know, tunnelled.
We, yeah, we have it for structures on the side yards, but not the fence. But anyways, yeah, we can, happy to, you know, if you wanna. We can either do it. As an agenda item or we can do it as sort of just offline, have a discussion about other, other. Municipalities or what other places you've seen have different code sections. I'd like to see those.
I mean, I, I could take it offline and work with you a little bit and then we could bring it to commission to discuss. If we, if you find it, it, it's, it suits. Uh, the ordinance is better.
Yeah.
I don't have a problem with that. If the other commissioners do not have a problem with that.
Okay. Is there something?
Are, are we, so, so is it going to be an agenda item or not?
Well, only if we, so again, no, it, it hasn't been determined at this point whether it. Follow the procedures for putting something on the agenda. We're happy to do it that way, but I think we can do something offline and then when we, if. Want to put something on the agenda, we'll, we'll do it, follow the procedures and the, and the rules and procedures for putting it on. So.
Because I, I kind of think there are, well, I think there ought to be a requirement. That if there's going to be, especially when there's a variance being asked for. And or whether there's a substantial fence question going on, there ought to be a requirement from the planning department before it comes to the commission. To have the property line established. So we're not.
Mock it up. Yeah, no, I.
Flying blind. You know, I, I think it's wrong to expect us to make a decision.
Well, let's, uh, let's not, we're, we're kind of flying out of bounds here with our reports. So I would just make the request that we discuss this. Later. All right. Any other, is there some more reports to do? Were you done, Phyllis?
Isn't SB nine and ten enough?
Oh, okay. All right. Well, just a reminder. So we don't have any planning commission meetings on next month.
Oh.
Our next, our next planning commission meeting will be September. Um, as all the towns, commissions and council are taking the month of August off in terms of meetings. And so, as you might imagine, that means there'll probably be a lot of stuff to, on, on the agendas in September. Both council and planning commission. We're still aiming to have. The objective design and development standards come before the planning commission as a zoning ordinance amendment. I think that on September twenty eighth. And. Go to council shortly after that. And then the other really big thing. Is the start of really of what we're gonna call it a housing element workshop series, which is sort of gonna kick off the town's housing element process. And will likely sort of take over. Our worlds, uh, to a great extent, or at least staff's world, a lot of us here. Um, it's gonna be an intensive process and one probably very. With hopefully a lot of community input and a lot of sort of tough conversations, I imagine. But. We're hoping that it really. As we've done in the past, if we're able to actually just bring. Community along through the process and be. Hundred, you know, transparent with everything that has to happen and what's going on and just provide information, education. Uh, in a very open and inclusive way that by the end of it, at least there'll be a consensus about. The best, making the best of maybe a tough situation. Just within terms of the number of units. As I've mentioned in the past, I think we'll have, there are plenty of places where certainly infill housing is, can be. Can work for the town, but we're gonna go through that process and discuss that as a, as a community. So. That's likely to start in, we're, we want to start that in September as well. So. Be on the lookout for that and hopefully. As the commission is in the know and understands these better than these issues sort of better than. The average Quinones resident who has plenty of other things on their plate. You know, we're hoping you can be ambassadors for, for staff as well in that regard.
Hey, Paulus.
Yeah, on the housing element. I hope we could keep it to housing and not do as one. A city, which I shall not name at this time in Marin County. Unfortunately, I've seen their housing element that they're putting into the general plan and it's more with social issues than actual. Housing information. And I think it's important we stay away from that. And I hope you and the rest of staff agree, but getting into. Doing good things for this group of people and that group of people and stuff, rather than talk about yak housing. I think can dig a hole that we're gonna have trouble getting out of.
Well, there are new state laws that are require us to do those sorts of conver, have those sorts of conversations and frankly, based on what. Has we've seen in, in Southern California and their ability to get those approved through the state. You have to do some, you'll have to get, we'll have to get into some of those discussions about historic history and, and zoning and so on and so forth. So I don't want to get into a big discussion now, but I'm, Phyllis, let's talk about it. You know, I, I, I know what you're saying, but there are. There's state laws that require us to really focus on.
I will send you a text or an email with the name of the city and show you where you can find it.
Okay.
Um, so let's move on to approval of the minutes for funding commission meeting minutes of July thirteenth, twenty twenty one.
I'm moved to approve.
Anybody second that?
I'll second it.
Call in favor.
All right.
Hi.
Okay. Well, I want to thank you guys for a lot of effort in tonight's session and. And they contributed mightily.
Yeah.
Adam, so it's all good. So, um, Paulus, before we go.
One more thing as we adjourn, since it's just us. Not only did Margaret join us from the east coast, today is her birthday.
It was yesterday, actually.
Well, yes, it was. Yeah, it, let's put it this way, in California, it's still your birthday, Margaret.
Congratulations. That's great.
Happy birthday.
Thank you. I had a wonderful day.
That's great.
Notice you didn't say evening or night, just day.
Yeah. All right.
All right, we're adjourned, so.
Thanks, everyone.